It's already two years waiting for a new truck right now.
So what are you guys asking for?
I guess.
What do you wanna do? What do we solve this?
I'm kinda asking that we move forward preliminary discussion of possibly buying another cab chassis. And again, what I wanna do with that red truck, that International, we got a brand new stainless steel body on that that truck that we purchased three years ago. So the cost of the new truck that we're getting into Western Star is a hundred and seventy thousand. I'm gonna probably guestimate that we're probably gonna be looking at maybe one thirty, one forty.
Cause right now, we're still looking at two years before we even see that truck chassis.
And again, we're gonna be falling behind again.
And so if if we start working on it now, in two years from now, we've already stretched this truck that's already giving us issues now, another two years. What's wrong with the white truck?
I mean? What's wrong with the white truck besides when it runs?
Yeah, when it runs.
No.
When it runs, there's there's just no power in it.
You have transmission issues, you have power issues with that truck.
It's an auto- it's an automatic truck and you have to shift it same standard just so that way you have enough power to get out the frigging door, literally get out the door. Adam had to stop at the door today and back up and take the door again just for him to get over a bump this high, the end of the door.
It's a truck that we purchased to get us by, again, three years to get us by, to get us by.
Because the old, because the ninety-six at that time, the frame was rotted. And it was to get us by.
Well. I'm sorry, that truck replaced the ninety-six?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, to get us by because again, we didn't have the funding back then to purchase a truck. And I personally think we're never gonna have funding to purchase a brand new truck coming out of CIP. This community.
Well, we don't, if we don't ever have a plan to do so, no.
And that's exactly where.
So what are you, are you looking into possibly buying a used chassis?
If there's anything available, Pete, I would gladly look for it. We found one, uh, that actually showed Luke and within a day it was already gone. Right now, there's such a demand for these trucks because uh, the guys that are in the facilities or the municipalities are buying trucks, are not getting their trucks. They're waiting and waiting and waiting and they're kind of in the same scenario we are.
Well, we're all in the same boat. We're all sinking in the same ship.
We are.
Right, every everything's, production's behind on everything.
Exactly.
Right.
No. In every community, like I say, I'll give you a good example of Frenchville. A little bit smaller than Mir. They took a little bit of money out of CIP and they financed the rest. And that's basically what we're doing with this Western Star. We're gonna finance probably all of it. And make payments on it.
I'd like to offer my perspective on it if I could.
Sure.
Um. I think that we should begin preliminary instruct, uh, investigation into getting a new truck. It's two, it's gonna be one and a half, two years, maybe three years before it shows up here in the town. Build a little bit of extra cushion into his budget so that we have some sort of down payment. Finance the thing. Build it into his budget. People are demanding the services. They want the streets clean.
It's understandable.
It's understandable. We all, and we all want, sometimes I think when they go by the front of my house, I go by, the state goes by too often, but boy, I'm glad that the street's clean and that sure that we are a citizen and appreciate it. I think we ought to discuss or put into motion a plan to have another truck, be it a Western Star or whatever, in two to three year time period. The longer that they run these older trucks, the more money we're gonna put into them. And it's gonna be, and now we're probably at the point where we're chasing good money after that. That's my view. I think that, you know, I think that we should be looking forward. This is what, two thousand twenty-two? Maybe have another new truck here in two thousand twenty-five.
Are we putting anything down on the two thousand twenty-two? Did we talk? No?
No, we really did talk.
So when we finance that, that's coming right out of your budget?
I, it's gonna be a discussion with the council and Nancy, Nancy wants to put her input on it.
We haven't, when we, when we ordered the truck, um, the discussion as as to how was it gonna get paid or whatever, was kind of not neglected, but it was put on the back burner to be discussed in this timeframe while we're waiting for the truck.
Yep.
Uh, I don't necessarily, my personal opinion is I don't want to deplete his CIP. I want to take maybe some money out of it. And the rest, we finance it over a five or seven year note. We build that payment into his budget. And 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 we move on. Uh, it's gonna be the, my estimation, gonna be the only way we're gonna be able to move on in getting this department that was neglected for thirty years.
So we'll have two, we're gonna have two notes on, we'll have two notes on his department.
Would have two notes on his, on his department. And I've been, I've been thinking about it and I've been thinking of what the, the long-term debt that this community has. And basically, it's not a whole lot of honey. The sewer plant is probably our biggest long-term debt. And that's being paid by the rate car, rate payers. It does, it's not coming out of tax dollars. Quote-quote tax dollars. The recycle center, we're paying like, I'm, and I, I could be all wrong, but I'm gonna use this figure as a round figure. We're paying thirty thousand dollars a year in note. And Nancy had mentioned the, maybe four or five years, that note is clear. Everything else in town, I believe that we are, we own or are pretty close to owning it. So as far as the debt ratio for the town, I think we're in a much better financial shape than a whole lot of other communities. And that's not, and that's due to everybody, every administration that's come here. You know, they, we script, we're saving whatever, and unfortunately, the scripting and the saving, like Peter said, now it's come to our lap. So we're, we are the council that's going to have to fix some of these issues. And I think we've, I've, I've been talking, I've been here for one time, I've been talking here that we should put money away every year for these equipment purchases. And I've been, every year, I've been about, you're stupid and you're this and that and everything. It's just, we have to think ahead. We can't think of just immediate. We gotta think of what's coming down the road. So I'm saying if we get order, if we plan now for a new truck in twenty twenty-five, uh, it's not that far out of reach.
No.
You know what I'm saying?
So would you be able to mate the plows with a new truck or?
No, the old plows are pre-eighties plows. And again, Nick drives.
No, it's a legit question. But the body, the 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 bed, the.
The dump bed on that red one is is new, so the stainless steel.
What about the dump bed on the, the white one? That's junk?
That's junk. That's a pre-eighties. And we've been having issues with those.
The uh, truck that we ordered, is that a dual axle?
No, single axle.
Single axle. Single axle, the new one coming.
Yes. It's more feasible, more productive to have a single axle now, now for turning greens.
But you said not too long ago that you needed a dual axle for the long, the bigger runs. Is that what the Maxadines for?
Yes. Yes. Allen runs.
Is it still handling it okay?
So far.
Cause I know that engine is
Yeah.
um, kind of underpowered, I would say.
Yeah, it is. That's a uh.
So we're babying that, right?
We are.
I mean, the whole, that that whole truck is underpowered and it it just not for what we need.
That that truck did two thousand nine. We bought, the town bought that truck brand new two thousand nine. Randy Canwell's town manager, they purchased the truck whole and they took all the plows, the wings, uh, that stuff off another a pre-eighties truck and sent it down to H P Fairfield and mounted that on that truck. And that truck has been plow-wise and again, it's here, it's been welded, the ends have been welded, overwelded on top of another weld, it's been, you know, and I get your point fast, it's.
I mean, to, I mean, our, our plow school that we go to, uh, we don't go more faster than twenty-five miles an hour.
It's very deceiving, Pete, standing outside the road.
It does, it's fast sometimes.
It does, but you're standing, cause you can hear them going boom, 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 boom.
Well, that's because you have, you have metal on top of that ball. Maybe, maybe it looks, maybe it looks twenty,
Yeah, right.
Maybe it looks like it's forty, but it is twenty. But twenty, twenty-five is max, and honestly, as an operator, twenty-five is max that I do on on main street. Side streets, ten, maybe fifteen, depending on how long of a, of a road. Like if I'm going Champlain Street or wherever, you know, it might be fifteen or, right, you know what I mean? But, um, it looks fast. And I, I mean, I've had my wife say, my God, do you guys go faster than? It's ten, fifteen miles an hour.
Really?
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a big, it's a big truck.
Well, certainly not gonna throw any snow. It's a big truck, right.
It's up your throat and you still would too.
Well, if you're going twenty-five miles an hour, you're throwing snow twenty feet, twenty feet over the bank. And you're gonna be pushing up somebody's porch.
If your snow's, if your snow's going literally to the top of the bank and just over the top of the, top of your bank, you're doing the good, you're doing the speed that roughly the speed that you should be doing, which is ten to fifteen miles an hour on a side street. So we're getting, we're getting our new one July with.
Why did we get production?
Well, it's in production.
Okay, I get it, it needs to go.
So can it, it needs to go down to H P Fairfield, down to Scott, Scott Egan to put the box on it, put the plows on it?
Paul. So we'll have by next month, early winter, hopefully.
Hopefully, hopefully. I'm gonna tell you right now, the H P Fairfield, the one that's putting our box and our plows on, is sitting on fourteen million dollars worth of inventory right now, waiting on trucks. And that's how far they are at. They purchase all, they can purchase my box, my box is sitting in Scott Egan, my plow is sitting in Scott Egan, just waiting for our truck to come in.
Okay, well, then we jump on the bad line and we order another truck?
Well, I want everyone.
What do we afford? Can we afford it?
I want everybody to feel comfortable. I want the opinion of the deputy town manager and town manager.
Uh, town managers? You know what I'm saying?
Well.
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Um.
What's the payment gonna rate for uh, a year?
I'm sorry, adult.
Uh, ten grand?
Well, no, you're, well, if you, a seven-year note on a hundred and forty thousand dollars, we're like, twenty-five years.
Well, if this truck, this new one will be one seventy, so if you calculate.
Twenty-five grand?
For a year. Very low interest, very low interest, so.
That's one. That's one mil.
So there's, there's no question, first real story, um, you and I have been working together um, for a long time as well as Luke who was over in the police department for the town of Andyra. You know, where, where are you at, twenty-five years or?
Twenty-six years.
Sixteen and twenty-six.
Seventeen.
Fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, eighteen.
Seventeen years.
So all of us have been working together, come capacity, believe me, related to roads. Um, and I had some real issues when I was at the library and not getting any service at all from our public works department. I just, I know what works died. And and Rick, I know we need all these trucks. And it really, like what Pete said and and I say, the hard part is when you're sitting in, the town manager, seeing the council seat, and you see how much money you have, and you really wanna grant all those wishes because you know you really need them, because yeah, you wonder why for thirty years somebody just kept, I know, we talked about the little tractor that, why we got the sidewalk tractors, cause the little beam tractor, like the bizarre well, like things were done and 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 nobody was looking at planning at a time when we could. If we were planning, you know, we shouldn't all of a sudden have to replace ten trucks at once, five trucks, two trucks, whatever, because they are so expensive. We haven't yet funded the truck that's on order. We need to figure that out. So I think this is a fabulous discussion. I'm glad that Rick is confident and Nick is there to come before all of us and and public listening and saying, you know, we really have to plan how to take care of the fleet. We're talking forty-seven miles in the summertime, thirty-seven miles in the wintertime. Um, and they work hard and do a lot of work and everybody wants a roads bid, but we just, we all wanna raise taxes, you know, we don't wanna raise budgets, so. Let's, I think a key group of people, you know, you know, myself, Luke, you know, one counselor or whatever, we need to actually, you know, look at our CIP, look at our surplus, look at, as I said, we've talked about what our debt is and we're coming out on some debt. And I think we do need to look at the, a financing program for the highway department. Um, versus just, um, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of CIP here, cause you know, when you look at general government, we're only putting seventy-five thousand dollars in the CIP for all departments, including highways, so it means you're just gonna empty the pool. So fabulous discussion. I think we need to have a smaller group outside of this and start putting, putting all those pieces together on paper, the debt, what's our state of peak, what's our surplus, you know, Rick, what you brought together with these trucks. It's not all gonna happen at once, but I'm glad you're not afraid to ask for it. Um, and I know we did some great job getting some of these trucks at lower rates, um, in different places in different states that are helping you out. But, um, people still expect premium service. And when you told me about that truck stopping on the street and you didn't have any power and you couldn't see outside, that is scary. Um, but that doesn't mean we need to get a new truck. So that's my, my input is that this is, um, let's figure out the next couple of months, a small group to be together outside of council, you know, Luke, he's got access to the system to print out all the kind of things we need. I know the CIP, I know the debt, and and let's sit and start look in the scene and make a plan, like we just said. Um, for building, getting what we need over time that's affordable for our public. Cause I know, isn't everybody enjoying a lower mill rate?
Well, yeah, we should have kept the mill rate the same as last year and we could have taken that overage and put that, we could have started there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, where are we at with the cop cars?
We still have them. Have not sold them. Now's the time to sell it, Bill.
Okay, so uh, that would have been uh,
But nobody can do it, cause no one can get one.
That would have been a hundred grand right there that we could have saved in one year.
Nobody can get one.
If we would have kept our mill rate the same and if we would have, could have sold one of the, you know, the new cruiser, that's a hundred grand right there. That would have been a good start on the new truck right there. So I, I'm, I'm not saying.
Now's the time to sell it because we're gonna get all our money back.
But we need to,
Yes.
I get it, your equipment is crap and we need, but we need to pull our heads out and find out what we're gonna want with this money. Uh, selling properties, whatever it takes, yes, I'm wholeheartedly agree. But same token, getting back to your second truck, and I wholeheartedly trust you, Rick. Uh, there's nobody I'd rather have running the department, highway department than you. If you can find, let's say a truck does pop up.
Yeah.
Holy crap, a guy calls you from a Brunswick thing says, Rick, I just found a truck, a chassis, and I, and I think it would work for you for uh, fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, are you interested?
Very much so.
Move.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And I think we should give him the opportunity, if he feels safe with that, if it's a happy medium, instead of buying, if he thinks he can work with a fifty-five thousand dollar truck versus buying another a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar truck, he says yes, that truck would work for me for ten years at least. I think we should be able to give the power to the manager and the department head who are running the town and not have to sit here and dictate it, say, go for it.
Cause that's what's happening.
Because you're not, we are in such different times right now as a country, as a, a town, whoever, whatever governing body there is, we have to think differently now.
Yeah.
So if you guys find something, I have no issue as a counselor, if it's a good deal, if you, it's a good deal for the taxpayers, it's a good deal for you guys as far as it being reliable piece of equipment, and if it's a good deal for the bookkeeper and the town managers, they say, yeah, this would work, move.
Yeah, that's something that needs to be moved quickly, cause again, where are you gonna get the money from?
Where, okay.
I, I don't have an open, that checkbook or like a farmer ran out of checkbook.
Not thinking like prior, like the way we've always done things.
No.
The way we've always done things is not starting out to work anymore.
Well, it's not, it's not going to work right now.
No.
It's not, it's not working right now.
Yeah.
No, just a bit of.
And that's nationwide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a bit, a bit of institutional history, okay? And past history of how this community works and so forth. And it's up to us as a council to make the changes. Any expenditure over five thousand dollars has to be approved by council. Okay? That is part of been the town's operating, operate, uh, operating mode for the last thirty, forty years. Okay, so it's up to us as a council to say, to give the town manager the authority to spend the appropriate amount of funds without council approval. Okay, so that's something that we as a group need to decide
Yours.
at, at, soon, so that it gives
I.
our incoming manager who has the authority to either say yes or no, and make that second decision without having for, for, for us to sit here in a.
I agree with you, well, but I think, I think tech, technology's working in our favor.
I got you.
Oh, yes.
So there's no reason why he can't call him, he can't group text us, and we can come in here after work and and make a decision within a twenty-four hour period.
Or here's, or here's.
Right, yeah.
So council can still be involved.
Here's, here's, here's even better.
Or yeah, we're zoom.
Here's an even better thing. Either Zoom or when you, when you issue a payroll warrant,
Yeah.
generally, it's executed in less than two, three hours.
Yeah, yeah.
We, there is no, there is no reason why we can't put out a group text, have a spec sheet done up in the, in the, uh, the Foxtrot program that we use. So we can all look at it, we can all sign off on it and say, hey, this makes sense. Or a quick Zoom call, or a group telephone call, and make it happen so that we can get equipment that becomes available. Because like you said, everyone's in the same boat, everyone's trying to get piece, what they need for their municipality because there's a shortage. Well, then we need to move faster than the other people so that we can get it for our municipality. Period. And there's no reason why, like Pete said, we can't use the technology that we have available to us to make, to make that happen.
Right.
And I understand that the taxpayers need to have a say when we're expending large sums of money. But it's our job as counselors and town managers and department heads to make sure that we can run the town. And if we have to do that and then find funding streams after the fact, then that's what we do, that's our job. So I am all for, if you come across something that we can use and we need to move quickly on, then by God, let's do it.
Yeah, exactly. And at the same token, I agree with Nancy, we need to keep putting more money in our capital improvement. We need to find, you know, um, whatever we can do for revenue, that piece of property in Woodland, and this building, the police cars. I mean, we're not using it, guys, we need to get rid of it. And whatever funds that we can gather, whether it's a dollar or a thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, we should put it to the side. And I think we can justify that a lot easier to our folks. You know what I mean? We're taking a little here, a little there, but we've done this, we've done that, you know what I mean? We all know we're in the same boat here. And we all know you guys have been running junk for eons for long. We wanna get you where you need to be. But we have to compromise too, that's why I'm saying, if you, if you can find something decent and you know, and I'm trusting you. If you tell me, Pete, I found a truck, holy cow, this new deal is decent, and it would be a third of the cost or half the cost of a new one, and it'll, it'll serve us for at least ten, fifteen years.
Yeah.
If you're comfortable with that, then he should be able to move, you should be able to move. We should be able to move.
Well, yeah, that's right. And you, you've hit the nail on that. He needs to be able to move, but unfortunately, the way we're, we're structured right now, we can't. So I think that, getting back what I was saying, that I think that we should put in the minutes or or or.
Is it in the charter?
I believe so.
Okay, let's change the charter.
So, can I, can I inter, interact here?
So.
Yes, absolutely.
So, couple of things that, you know, town meeting, that we, the people of the town do have the power to appropriate money. Um, the council doesn't. So when we go into town meeting, which is coming in June, we, we look at the budget, is that the only thing that we can spend is what's appropriated by the people in, in the town meeting, or we have to have a special town meeting in order to spend money than saying the CIP out. So we wanna, as we're talking about, looking at things differently. So if we get some of this, you know, looking at all of these variables, and I, Luke and I are both frustrated, have been frustrated long before Luke, Luke joined with our auditors not getting our audit information to us. I should be able to tell you right now what the status of our surplus is, what the status of our CIP is, but we're waiting for numbers from our auditor. And I'm, we are, yeah, and um, I know that our surplus is actually in pretty good shape, but actually uh, we owe wastewater. Um, there's, there's issues of you just can't look at the credit, the chaotic account and say, oh, we got this much money. Um, because in trio system, it keeps track of which, you know, when the town owes, the sewer owes, the sewer owes the town because we just work out on a checking account. But I think we, as we, the one thing I do know by stature is that we can never give the power to the town manager or department heads to spend money that hasn't been appropriated.
And that, that's not the intention there, you know?
So, right, and so what we wanna do is, we think that as we go to town meeting in June, is like knowing, you know, we're gonna have these numbers, we're gonna be equipped with what's the CIP, what's our debt, and we can look at our warrant articles and say, we need to have a warrant article that crafts, you know, that gives authority that the people discuss in that town meeting to have this, this, let's say it's two hundred thousand dollars of this, whether it's a hundred thousand from surplus, a hundred thousand from CIP, available over the next year for purchases for this department. And we've ever done something like that before. We, we look at a specific truck, a specific car, a specific whatever. And it's maybe rethinking that process and I'm, so I believe that we can do that. And in the budget process as we go forward, I think we often focus too much time on looking at individual department budgets that are just, you know, like boring items. And we waste a lot of time, but this is like the, the plan and process. And um, talking about how to make sure when we come out of the June town meeting that you guys have the authority, you need to spend money, that you can pass along to the manager, to the department head. And you're right, Paul, we have what's called purchasing policy, and it needs to be rewritten once we make those other changes. Because um, it's, it's something that, that we should change. I, I think this is a, a new era and I think we're all on board to make those changes. And I think, I believe it can be done. Um, and to, to make it possible for government to be able to function more like a business than like a dinosaur. So think about that as we're, as we're going forward, that we wanna focus on the event process, where we're just gonna look like, what their, what our money is, so that we can ask the public in June to give us those permissions without calling extra meetings.
And I think, you know, going forward, we might wanna come up with a replacement schedule for these versus waiting until we're at a crisis mode to, we need to replace it now. You know, and and look at what we have, what's gonna be need, what's gonna need to be replaced next and, and come up with a plan so that we're not kind of panicking and trying to, to come up, to get, to replace these and, you know, things like what happened to you the other night don't happen.
It's not just this department. We have to, we have to make an evaluation of every department and get them set up. We have ambulances right now that we're gonna have issues with.
Right.
We don't have a plan to replace any ambulance right now at all. Other than one that we have donated that we're waiting for them to come pick it up from Autotronics and go through it and see what it's gonna cost to put it on the road. That's our plan right now. Bad plan.
Yeah.
We have computers in every department. We have no plan to replace any of this technology till it falls apart. Rick is using the computer in his office right now that's got Vista as an operating system.
Are you serious?
Oh my God.
I went over the other day and I was like, wow. I'm surprised, I'm quite frankly, I'm surprised it still actually works.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's, this is something that we need to go through each department to create, create a problem.
Stop and wait.
You know, and and it, it's a broken record. And it's, it's uh, it's discouraging because I've lived here all my life and you saw the writing on the wall ten, twenty, thirty years ago. And uh, I hate to beat it, keep beating a dead horse, but now it's caught up with us. Look at this building.
Yeah.
Look at this building. All kinds of problems. So, yeah, we're, we're either gonna have to spend some really big money here in a, in a short amount of time and like it or not, in, in, in order for us to function as a municipality, here we are. We swallowed it and swallowed it and swallowed it. Now we're gonna have Star Spitting.
Yeah, just let me make one comment though, and I, and something I'm happy that I didn't hear. Because I hear it when outside of here, is it, you know, Rick wants or is getting a new truck? We're not getting Rick a new truck.
No.
And you know why? There's two people out there that are keep doing that, I.
Yeah, you have to, you correct, I correct them every time.
Let them go.
It's a Rick, you're a truck now.
The town of Andyra is.
That's right.
And Rick, unfortunately, because he's in charge of three departments, each of those departments need equipment.
Yeah.
So he, Rick carries that burden personally, which he shouldn't.
No, he needs to stop doing that.
So we just, I think it's our responsibility to make sure when people are putting out that.
If people have an issue with the way things are going, then they can come in here and sit down and address us.
Exactly.
They don't need to be bugging him. He's got enough on his plate.
Agreed.
And really, you don't need to be entertaining that.
Agreed.
And I typically don't. Yeah.
And you should.
I, I do, sometimes I do take it personal with some call, be on the video.
You, you have them, you have them come here.
Yeah.
And we'll explain it.
Have them, have them some downstairs.
You're not a, you're not a, you're not a punching bag here.
I let a lot go by, but once, once in a while, it does.
You're not a punching. And people are complaining.
Same person to blame, so.
Well.
They can run for council if they think they can do a better job.
Exactly.
Unfortunately.
Can I say, can I say, can I, can I say one more thing?
Absolutely, go ahead Nancy.
My uh.
Yeah, go ahead Nancy.
Um, the difference that's also, the difference that's also happening right now, and I can say this from having been sitting in and out of this town manager seat since two thousand and nine and then fourteen and then seventeen, is that. and then fourteen, and then seventeen, is that when we walk out of this room from the town manager's, you're not gonna take care of anything. I'm hearing that now the council is, it realizes how important it is to be engaged in a positive process to help all this happen. Cause that's, um, it's, you know, Rick and I, except we've been working together for, well, I said, for me eighteen years. He's here longer, and he and I have been working together as I've been in and out of the seat. And a lot of times, it's just, okay, here's the problem, and then council walks away, and it's been two weeks later and asking what's been done. I really appreciate and enjoy and looking forward to seeing you guys and gals. And that this is the change, is that it's, it's not a, uh, micromanagement, it's not a power struggle, it's, this is what we have to do as a team, cause it takes the council not to say, okay, come in, just do it, and close the door and come back two weeks into it. I, this is really positive, because you guys recognize all of us together, which in public. Um, so thank you, Rick, for bringing it forward. Thanks for everybody that, this is a, a real change that I don't think I've ever seen a council so engaged in being involved and making the town function well. And that's not to criticize other councils that have tried hard, um, on many things, but I think a lot of times it, it, it really does take, and you guys really understand, care, and are engaged in actually being part of this change. So thank you.
Excellent. All right.
Okay.
So Mr. Chairman, point of order, can we move on?
Yeah, I think we've discussed the highway department, and we know, uh, I think in our minds, we all know where we need to go.
Yep.
When you see Ben, and we'll take directions from you as chairman.
Yep.
And, uh, all right there.
All right, so we'll move, move to one.
Do you have any other thing you need to add?
I have nothing. But just to reiterate what, uh, Luke just said about computers here, recycling center, we're still playing with machinery this, 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 this.
Yeah, no, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it here in a minute.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely a question.
And that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be taken care of here in a few minutes.
All right, so moving on to new business, item B. Uh, town office phone and internet network status and needs.
There we go.
Speaking of, uh.
There we go.
Thinking, antiquated and failing equipment. Um, Devin and I, uh, talked about, uh, looking in, I asked Devin to look into a new phone system. A new phone system I've been looked into for the town of Andyra back four or five years ago. Um, and it was decided that, or maybe longer than that, maybe before Nancy was even the town manager. Mike had started to look into it, and the replacement cost of our phone system is gonna be about twelve thousand dollars because of the spider web of wires running all over the place in every which direction um, throughout the system. And, and it, our network, our, uh, network infrastructure is causing us some issues. It's causing us some conflicts, and it's causing us some lack of, loss of internet, which is.
And it's costing us money and it's costing us time.